Welcome to One on One. I'm Phil Tillman, your host. In our continuing effort to introduce the voters to all of the candidates running for public office, we welcome into our studio Larry Dodd. Larry, welcome back into our studio.
Hi, Phil. It's a pleasure to be here.
Yeah, you've been here before and you are running for county council district three?
That's correct. Wycomico County Council District Three. We were involved in recently with some redistricting, so I was previously in District Five, but now I am currently in District Three.
Okay.
Which the border was close anyway.
Generally speaking, how do you describe District Three?
Well, that's one of the things that I was going to speak about because a lot of people don't know where it is. I ask people, "What district are you?" And a lot of them don't know, so I said, "Well, where's your card? Do you have your card in your pocket, your voter registration card?" And if they have it, we look on the back, we look at legislative district, council matic district. A lot of people aren't aware of that, where their district is. But if they don't have that, I explain, "If you look at Route 13 and Route 50, you have four quadrants." District Three geographically is Route 50, Route 13, so it's the southeast quadrant of Wycomico County. It incorporates part of East Salisbury, the Route 50 part of Parsonsburg, Pittsville, Powellville, all the way down the county line, then back up to Fruitland on Route 13. And several areas there, it overlaps Route 13 and Route 50. For instance, District Five jumps into that district quite a bit in the Kilburne area.
Yeah. Well, is this generally speaking, the district that Gail Barkovich represented?
That is correct. Gail decided that she's not running again, not seeking another term. She wants to spend more time with her family, so I was asked to run and I obliged.
Good. Well, you're... Tell us a little bit about your background, but I know you're currently involved with the Board of Education, right?
Right. I was appointed to the Board of Education in 2009 by Governor O'Malley and reappointed this past year. So I'm on my fifth year with the Board of Education. Something can't keep me down. I've always got to be involved in public service. For years, I've been a public servant. Started off as a volunteer with the fire department at Station Two. And I had about 10 years as volunteer and then I decided to go to paramedic school while I was in college and become a paramedic. Then I took a career job with the Salisbury Fire Department and I worked my way up the ranks to firefighter, all the way up to captain. So I retired recently due to some injuries, but I have over 25 years in the fire department. As far as some other leadership background, I was on the county council from 2002 to 2006, which was a very exciting time in my life. I think you were in the council previous, weren't you?
Mm-hmm.
And so I'd been following politics for quite some time. And I remember when you were on the council, Henry Parker was on the council, so I was excited about that. And I decided I wanted to run. So about a year before, I decided I was going to run at that time. So from 2002 to 2006, I served on the council at that time. It was the executive branch as well as the legislative branch.
Right.
And then 2006, I'm human. We decided that we didn't want to stay married, so there was a factor there. So I didn't get reelected because I was going through a marriage. I had four-year-old twins, so that put a damper on things. So my priority was my children at that time, and they still are my priority. So...
How old are your twins now?
Right now, they're 13.
Oh, my golly.
Time is fine.
Yeah.
And they're 13 years old, just turned 13 in April, and they're going to Bennett Middle School, the old Bennett Middle School.
Yeah.
So they won't get to go to the new Bennett Middle School, but they're very well aware of the new middle school and they're hoping that'll be finished this year so that they'll at least be able to go half-time.
Yeah.
There are a lot of kids talking about that, and that would be exciting if they could.
Yeah. But they'll... By the time that opens, they'll be in Bennett Senior.
They will be...
Which is also a new...
They're probably going to go to Parkside, but...
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, their district would be Parkside, but Bennett Senior is a new school as well.
Yeah.
But a lot of their friends are going to Parkside. They're splitting up in that area. Of course, the Board of Ed is going to have to do some redistricting for the new middle school.
Well, that's always an interesting situation when they do that because I remember some of the redistricting episodes. Let's talk of the conversation and controversy regarding redistricting. "Well, wait a minute. I bought this house because I thought we would go to Delmar School," et cetera, et cetera.
Right. That's something we're expecting. Yes, it is. It's very difficult.
Yeah. But it's, you know, population shifts, as is the case with the districts. There's redistricting, the council matic district.
The council matic district, yes, sir.
Certainly. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And the districts, the legislative districts for the state.
Yes.
My goodness, they are drastically changed.
Yes.
Yeah.
And added a district.
Yeah. Yeah.
District 38C, which is Mary Beth Carosa is running for that one.
Right. Right. Well, we've had Mary Beth Carosa and Judy Davis both on this program. So anyway, that is interesting. She had an interesting answer to a question they asked her, what issues were particular to 38C. She said, "It really doesn't matter because we're all in this together." And I guess that's the same true... Same is true for council matic districts, is it not, for county council?
Yes, that is absolutely correct. I don't consider it an issue, but one of the biggest things that I will adapt to is I've always said that I have an open door policy. I have good ears. I listen. Call me. My cellphone is on my hip. It's available 24 hours a day. Call me on my home phone, stop by my house. I will always listen. And when I go door-to-door, I talk to people and I ask them what are their concerns. And I don't always want to call it issue. Issue's a big word, but whatever concerns them, I will listen to, I will address, and see if we can get a situation resolved.
What do you think are the big concerns facing the Wycomico County government in the upcoming... In the year ahead?
Well, of course, everyone knows money, revenue. It's very difficult. With my experience on the Board of Education, I haven't lost that experience on the county council, so I've got a lot of experience considering a significant amount of money will be going to the Board of Education. I have to be well aware of what's going on there. The Board of Education has, last time we discussed it, about 53% free and reduced meals farm. So that's a lot in this county. The student population, that's a lot. There's a large homeless population in the school system. So if it's in the school system, it affects everybody in the county, so you need to consider that. So you mentioned something prior to going on the air is something that all the candidates discuss is jobs. There are a lot of jobs that have been lost over the last 10 years, actually. So job creation is something that we need to consider. Something I would like to see is a moratorium on some of these impact fees so that we can get the contractors out building homes again. I'd like to see us develop. I know some homes are being sold at this time, but that's some creative selling, I guess. But we need to get people back to work. If you start building more homes, you start building more businesses, you're going to put a lot of people back to work. And then they'll be able to spend money, and that will increase revenue for the county.
Mm-hmm.
But I've got a lot of ideas that I'd like to see. Tourism is something that we need to capitalize on. We have the Chesapeake Bay close by. We have the rivers close by. Have a lot of area that we can do some things. I don't want to discuss right now, give away all my secrets, but I've got some ideas that involve tourism, and it would be great if we can capitalize on those and bring people to the area. Something that's going to keep the college students here and let them become part of our job force. Students, whether they're high school students going away to college or Salisbury University students, a lot of them are leaving. They're not staying. There's nothing here. If you don't have a job, they're going to go where the jobs are.
Mm-hmm. So what effect can the county government have on creating jobs?
Well, as an elected leader, as a department head, I think it's our responsibility in the county government to seek out ideas, to listen to other people. There are a lot of people that travel. They see what's working in other areas. I travel a lot myself, and I pick up on what's going on in these other towns, in these other counties. And if it works there, it can work here. So bring some ideas. Again, I mentioned earlier that I listen. If you have a good idea, let's talk about it. No need to reinvent the wheel.
Well, it's been said our three major employers are the university, the hospital, and poultry, the poultry industry.
Agriculture.
And agriculture. How can the county government be supportive of all three of those entities? They're job creators, so what can... In each of these instances, what can the county government do to help?
Well, the county can build incentives, which some are already built in as far as taxes and helping keep these jobs here. Environmental issues, work with state legislators, work with MACO, do what you can to ease up on some of these environmental constraints. We do have a lot, but we need to protect the environment. And I do think that a lot of farmers do what they can to protect the environment. You have Purdue, you have the hospital that create a lot of waste, so they're always being watched on what they do. Recycling, something as simple as recycling within the hospital. I've been a patient there recently, and I see a lot of recyclables go in the trash. Are they being recycled or are they being thrown away at the dump?
Yeah.
If they're the biggest employers, they've got a lot of people there. They may have a lot of waste, so let's take advantage of that. Be considerate of the environment. But we need to keep, as you mentioned earlier, we need to keep those employers here. We can't depend on those three. We need to bring more jobs here. We need to create more jobs. As a county, we have SWED. We need to work with him more, Dave Ryan. I believe he's still the Economic Development Director. His name needs to be out there, and he's doing such a fine job, but it's difficult for him to do something in these economic times. But we need to work harder and collaborate with him to see what we can do to bring businesses here.
What state government does certainly has an impact on all the counties and the towns around the state. How can the county government be more interactive with the state government, with the legislators, with the governor and delegates and senators? What avenues does the county have to be... To get our word and our message to them about the impact of their actions on us?
Right. MACO is our biggest advocate, Maryland Association of Counties. They have a legislative body that works with the state legislators. One of the most important things that I think is forget about partisan politics. "I'm a Republican. You're a Democrat. We're friends. Let's work together." Right now, I see a lot of people, especially during election time, put up the sign, "I'm an R, you're a D." It's like an enemy. "No, we're friends. We're going to work together. Whoever gets elected, we're going to work together with the state legislators, no matter if they're Republican or Democrat. We need to work together. We need to be friends." When I see my friends in public, I'm certainly cordial to them, and I strike up a conversation. I still want to be friends with them. If we're sitting at the table and we disagree on things, that's healthy.
Yeah.
But we need to work together.
One of the candidates for state government, on his sign says conservative and effective. And I thought that was interesting, an interesting combination. You... To get the conservative... Let's face it, a lot of the Eastern Shore is very conservative.
Yes.
And yet, you can go to Annapolis and howl at the moon, or you can go to Annapolis and deal with your other legislator, whether they're Republican or Democrat or independent, to get things done and get the message across. Well, that's very interesting. Well, you don't like to use the word issues. What are some of the other challenges that you're hearing as you go door-to-door? What are people talking about?
One of the things I heard not too long ago is, and they weren't referring to the county, but they were talking about how the governments interact amongst themselves, and that has changed. On the county council, there are seven legislators. They all need to work together. They need to be friends. They need to work with the executive. So we don't need a dysfunctional council. So that's something that I can do. I can work with anybody. So get a good council in place and somebody that can work with the executive and get bills passed, get the budget passed. And the biggest thing, again, is money. Going back to money, taxes. People say that they want us to live within our means, and I believe that. At some point, we've got to quit spending without reducing core services or essential services.
Yeah.
But everything costs.
Well, I'm thinking, Larry, you're on the school board. You don't raise any money on the school board. You have to deal, as a school board and the superintendent, has to deal with the amount of money that you have.
Yes.
Live within your means, so to speak. You hear that all the time about government. We want them to live within their means. You have some practice in doing that.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
And sometimes you have to shuffle funds around to get things done.
Yeah. Well, Warwick Community College is another example of an institution that we all say we're so proud of, but they're almost always woefully underfunded.
Yes.
And they have to find innovative ways to do... To reach their goals without... Within the budget constraints that they have. So I guess that applies to county government is what I hear you saying.
Right.
Yeah. Well, it'll be an interesting time for you because you've served on the county council before when they were both the county executive and the legislative body. Now, we have a county executive, form of government, and the county council is strictly legislative.
Yes.
Just try to describe the difference. Do you think that's going to be? I mean, it's going to be an interesting comparison.
It will be an interesting comparison, as you say, because I haven't done that before. So hopefully, when I get back in, we'll see how it pans out. Because like you said, it'll be all legislative, but we're going to have to work hand-in-hand with the executive body. The county executive's going to do their budget, and then he's going to pass it down to us. Then we have to adopt it. He may introduce bills. Then we have to work on it. Then we have to see if we can pass the bills. So you have to collaborate. You have to work hand-in-hand. So you'll still have your hand as a county council member. You'll still have your hand in the executive body.
Larry, once you find yourself on the county council again and on this legislative body, what will be your priorities?
Job creation. I want to work with the developers, with SWED, the other departments, and see what we can do, whether it's cutting back some of the fees, reducing some of the taxes that they have to pay. Everything that you talk about, fees or taxes, are all the same. It's something that has to come out of one pocket and go into the government. But do what we can to get more businesses here. I tell you, it's kind of disappointing when you ride through one of our industrial parks and they're pretty much vacant. I'd like to see those buildings filled. I'd like to see those lots built on again. Need to compete. I remember it was probably about 10 or so years ago, the Walmart Distributing Center was going to be built, possibly in Somerset County at the time. Look for things like that. Are they going to build again? If so, where can we put it? In Wycomico County. That's something that you need to work with, with your federal legislators, too, because they're always working on projects like that. They're going to NASA. Whatever we can do, you need to work hand-in-hand with other county governments, other state agencies. Make friends. Keep them your friends. And try to get them to pass bills that benefit the citizens of Wycomico County, especially if it's going to keep our taxes down and create jobs. There's a lot of unemployment around, and there is a lot of homeless. It's just about every corner you go on anymore, you see people holding up signs saying they're homeless.
Yeah.
And it's disturbing.
What I hear you saying about job creation stuff, you don't necessarily have all the ideas, but you be receptive to ideas that different people might have. And that's a very refreshing attitude, I think. Some people think if it's not their idea, you know, they can't embrace it.
Right.
But somebody talked the other day in here about the upfront impact fees that are required by a developer on a particular tract of land. And just the simple thing of making that upfront fee, let's say it's $3,000 or $5,000, whatever it is, defer it until the end. When the house... When the finished product is sold...
Right.
That's where the money is, instead of making the person, the builder...
Right.
Put that money upfront. That sounded like a neat idea to me, and certainly as a legislator, I guess you'd have to look at all the ramifications of that, but...
That's a great idea. If you're building a spec house, you have to wait till it's built before you can really collect your profits on it. And then when it's built and sold, it's when you could collect that fee. And you brought up a good point. You have to find out if that's legal.
Yeah.
But I know other counties are putting moratorium on... They have a moratorium on some of these fees so that they can boost start the construction business again.
Yeah. Well, it would be nice to see houses going up and the brick masons and the guy... The roofers and the... I mean, there's so many different skills that are required in building a house or a building. And a lot of those people are doing other things right now.
Right.
You know?
Some of them are collecting unemployment. Some of them are out on... Out of work, collecting other funds. Through my travels, I travel through some of the neighborhoods, and what is disturbing as well is seeing a lot with a block foundation built on it, and it's overgrown with weeds.
Yeah.
I see that a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, there are. I know some examples as well.
So these contractors had to just stop what they were doing, and they took a loss on that because they had to buy those blocks, had to buy that concrete to pour that footing. So I'd like to see those lots going full steam ahead with the builders. Like you said, you've got your bricklayers, you've got your carpenters, you've got your plumbers, your electricians. There's a lot of people that will have jobs once we start building again.
Yeah. You mentioned tourism, and a lot has been said about the major, the pork in the park.
Yes.
And then a lot of talk is recently about this softball World Series...
Yes.
That they've had. I don't know what the impact of that is. Well, when you get on the county council, you have different assignments, airport commission.
Yes.
Tourism. What would be your interest, whatever you're asked to do?
Well, that's a good point. Whatever I'm asked to do, I'll do just about anything you ask, of course. You bring up the softball. When the USSA tournament was here, the last two years, I worked at Fruitland Little League. I'm on the board of directors at Fruitland Little League. So we had the softball tournament there two years in a row, and it was almost three weeks. And you have to think about it. These people came out of town, so they're eating in their restaurants. They're sleeping in our hotels. So that is a boost to our economy. And I know one of our board members also runs a tournament locally, and it's bringing in a few outside teams. And he's always bragging that it brings $400,000 to the economy. So if you have a little weekend tournament locally, and it brings that amount of money, you can imagine what the big softball tournaments are bringing.
Yeah.
But there's other things that we can capitalize on. You see more and more soccer. So if we start to add in those soccer tournaments, just like we do these softball tournaments, and even baseball, we've got to bring them here.
Yeah.
So we have to work together with tourism and Parks and Recs and do what we can. And you have to also work with the other counties because we may not have enough fields here. So if we're going to bring something that large, I believe we worked with Ocean City and Worcester County on the girls softball tournament.
Yeah. Well, I think there's this organization called the Tri-County Council of Governments.
Yes.
What is that? Is that just counties or...
They have their organization, some of their buildings at... Is it Winter Place Park? What park is that where Shore Up is now?
Well, it's out there across from Warwick is where the Tri-County Council, I think, is. Well, the Tri-County Council operates the Shore Transit, I think.
Yes, they do. And then I believe Shore Transit is running that route now for Salisbury University back around. So that is something that I would like to see some of our citizens use more often as bus transportation. You look at what they do in the cities. That's how most people get around is on buses. It would be nice if we can get some of these vehicles off the road and let people take the buses.
Yeah.
The Tri-County Council, I haven't heard much out of them lately. That is a good organization because you've got the three counties working together.
Yeah.
And I forgot how often they meet.
Well, I think it's monthly. But they also have municipal representation.
They do. I believe they have one representative.
And then there's one or two of the delegates. So it's state government, county government, and municipal government...
Right.
Coming together saying, "Okay, we have an opportunity," or "We have a problem," or whatever, and they address it as a joint group, which is... The idea is terrific.
Right.
Yeah. A lot has been said, Larry, about the roads and infrastructure and the fact that the state government has cut a lot of the funds from the gasoline tax. What's your position on roads and infrastructure?
Well, I tell you, roads are very important for us because you need roads to get to work or get to the hospital or get to school. They're very important for us. We have a lot of potholes out there. And my position on that is I would like to work through the Maryland Association of Counties or work with the people that I know that are in Eastern Shore delegation and see what we can do to restore those highway user funds because it's a tax that is dedicated to our roads, and we need those back, whether it's county roads or the municipalities.
Good.
And something else that I forgot to mention, I wanted to talk about farmers. Yes, I'm pro-farm. We talked about some of the farmers in some of the legislation. But I remember talking to a farmer not too long ago that was concerned about the value of his land dropping, and I want to do whatever we can to keep their property values as high as possible. Because a lot of farmers are depending on their land to be their retirement. And something that we need to consider, too. We go to the grocery all the time, go to the store all the time, to buy our groceries, and without farmers, we won't have food. So they are an important commodity in Wycomico County. So it's something we need to consider as a priority as well.
Yeah.
Well, something else I'd like to see, there's something called a SWOT analysis, strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats. I know that's done with some different agencies. It'd be nice if we could see something like that done as a county and see what we can do there. See what our strengths and our weaknesses are and what our opportunities and threats are. And go by that. It'd be nice if we can get somebody to do that type of analysis.
Yeah, that's interesting. I never heard of that before. That's neat. Well, Larry Dodd, this half hour's gone very quickly.
It has.
And we're going to let you, as we do all the candidates, have the opportunity to pretend that that camera there is the front door. And you know, I know you go door-to-door, so you just knocked on the door, and Mr. and Mrs. Jones have come, and they're in your district. What do you say to them?
Say, "Hi, I'm Larry Dodd. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'm running for the Wycomico County Council. This is an important year, and we want to make sure that we get the best candidates as possible in our local government." So some things about me, I'm a father of 13-year-old twins. They're my world. They're my first priority. However, when they're not with me, you'll be my first priority. I mentioned earlier that I have an open door policy, and my phone number's 410-430-8900. If you have any issues, any concerns, again, I don't like the word issue, but if you have any concerns or challenges, please call me or look me up on Facebook, Larry Dodd for Wycomico County, or you can look me up at larrydodd.com. And on November 4th, I would love to have your vote. Thank you very much.
Good. All right. Thank you, Larry, for coming in. Thank you for putting your hat in the ring, so to speak, and stepping up and being willing to serve the public. and stepping up and being willing to serve the public. We appreciate it. We thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you. My pleasure. And I thank you, Phil Tillman, for allowing me to participate in this one-on-one, and thank PAC-14 and Tom Taylor. I think it's been a great event. And I tell you, PAC-14 is a diamond. What do they call it?
Diamond in the rough?
Diamond in the rough, or it's a gem. It's something that we do need around here. So please support PAC-14.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you very much for that plug. Well, we'll repeat that several times. All right. Well, thank you, Larry Dodd, and thank you for being with us right here on PAC-14.